Okay, so uh just a little feedback. Most of you know, uh if you don't, I just wanted to give um a little bit of an insight to to who we are. Um we're Reno Apex Soccer Club, so most of you would know us as formerly uh Reno MVLA and also Players North. Um we were founded in two thousand and six. And our our founders are actually joining us here on the call. Uh you've got Randy on here as well as Heather. Uh we're a community-based soccer club. Right now, we're servicing about sixty-eight teams with roughly a thousand players involved in all of the programs that we host. Uh we have players competing within local leagues. Most of those leagues you would know is uh our GBYSL leagues, whether it's recreation or um our GBYSL select. But we also have teams that compete in US Club Soccer's NorCal League. Some of the things that I want to share to you as as we start to roll this out, um our mission, our vision, and just the three pillars that we're looking to implement. And it's how we operate daily, it is uh how we educate our staff, uh it's how we communicate with our players. And it's the expectation that when we bring families into our club, this these will be our goals for them. So you can see there what our mission is. We're committed to providing a positive, safe, fun, and challenging environment for our young people of all levels and backgrounds to play the game of soccer. You can see our vision here is to provide a structured, developmentally appropriate, and player-centered platform that will offer the opportunity for our young people to achieve their goals, both on and off the field, with the ultimate goal of them succeeding in life. You can see these uh these are our three pillars that we work off of. So first and foremost, it's developing the person. What does that mean? We will see the person before the player. Being really intentional with the words that we use. You can see here, I've uh I've committed to uh the the framework of we're working with young people. We're not working with players. To use the sport of soccer to teach life skills. We will focus on developing the individual within the context of the team. Second one there, you can see is develop the club. Our members, you all. We're talking about our coaches, our players, and our parents. Will work hand in hand to drive our vision daily uh uh sorry, on a daily basis so that our club can be something the local community can be proud of. And the last one there is develop the future. Our pathway will look to leave a more complete person and provide our young people with the skills that can be used throughout their lives, therefore positively impacting our community as a whole. So some of the things that you can, you should, uh you and you can expect from us. First and foremost, an evidence-based development developmentally appropriate player framework. What does that mean? Well, we talk about the game format. We're talking about child development guides our decisions in player development. The last five weeks, I've been on a journey with our staff. And I'll take you all briefly on how we build out our player learning plans. Not just the player, we're talking about where they are cognitively, as well as physically, emotionally, and then we get into the technically and 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 tactically pieces that we'll start to hone in on. The second piece there, you should be able to expect that we have an educated staff that is committed to continuing their growth and development as coaches, both informally through some of the staff development options that we we offer our staff, as well as formal coaching courses and seminars. The third one there, you should be able to expect a structured yearly calendar. We call that the macro cycle. That includes developmentally appropriate learning plans to include phase goals, objectives, activities, and coaching that are all linked to the learning environment. The fourth one there, you can expect a club-wide curriculum that includes a game model, a game idea, principles, player-specific traits and behaviors, and terminology. Right now, going into this these uh first few weeks of the spring season, all of our players will be working off of the same learning plans in the same framework through a macro cycle that I've developed. We put that under an annual plan. I'll share some of that with you, so you can see the journey that all of our players will be on. And then the last one there, you can expect a shared dialogue. When we talk about shared dialogue, we're talking about the coach, the player, and the parent. That's honest, transparent, empathetic, with the young person and their growth and development as the central theme. The next one we have is, what can we expect from you? The first one I put on there is critical patience. There's a reason why long-term player development takes seven to ten years and not seven to ten months. And I use that analogy because seven to ten months is when the next essentially tryout period comes. If we don't see what we want, if we're we're not happy where we are, the development that we feel hasn't progressed, we look for that next team or that next club. This is why I want to be as transparent as possible with what our staff are being educated on. Evidence-based research that we're using to develop the young people in front of us. The second one there is engagement. I want you to be open to learn alongside your child. However, it's empowering them to take charge of their growth and development. So really, what we're trying to do is we're we want to be able to cultivate responsibility and initiative. And then the third one is involvement. You can see there, as a club, we'll be we'll be providing opportunities for parent education throughout the year on numerous topics. I'll talk about the one that we're planning for February. We ask that you join us on this journey as we look to provide not only a positive, safe, fun, and challenging environment for our young people, but an environment that you as a parent, as a guardian, can be proud to associate yourself with. This is our club. So what I'll do is I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Jen, if we do have a few questions in the chat, I can briefly uh briefly touch on them before we start to give some of the examples of um of what I mentioned earlier, okay?
I'll give a minute or so to let people, if they've come up with something, to put something in the chat. As it sits right now, it's just mostly we're blocked at a capacity at the moment. So if you have people reaching out, I think Rob's working on a message to everyone right now. Um let them know, we apologize for the capacity limit and we are working on. You guys, you know, the thing is going to be recorded, so we'll share it. So we'll give it maybe like forty-five more seconds. If you have any questions on what you've just heard, then we can let Vanessa move on. Well, I think you're good to go, Ness.
Okay, perfect. I'll share my screen again. So like I said, I wanted to give a few examples. The first example we'll go through is I'll give uh an example of a learning plan that is uh pertinent to a specific age group. And then what I'll do is I'll give an example of what our um annual plan looks like. So what that learning plan looks like within the context of that macro cycle, so that entire um entire season, seasonal year, I apologize. And then um I will go into what's an example of our zones are. So we have three zones. I'll give an example of what zone two looks like. So you can start to kind of wrap your head around it. Okay, uh Jen, just a quick thumbs up if you can see my screen.
Sure can.
Okay, so as I said, this would be one example of a learning plan, and this would be for the U thirteen to U fourteen age group. We have this for our U uh U five all the way through U eighteen. So what you can see here is we talk about, again, this player-centered, we're focused on the individual within the context of the team. What you can see here is, as I mentioned, there's a lot of layers that go into not just turning up to practice or turning up to games, but what we talk about is you can see the first line there where the player is um in terms of their developmental stage. So for this um for this age group, this U thirteen, U fourteen, we're talking about that adolescent age. You can see here, it breaks down into the game format, so they play the eleven V eleven. And then it starts to talk a little bit here about some of the characteristic characteristics, sorry. You can see some of the social, emotional, cognitive. And then what it goes into is the next phase for us is they're in this progression phase. So this starts to get a little bit more into the soccer weeds. I don't want to go too deep into it, but I want you to get a a little bit of an idea of uh of what the players are going through. So it talks here about the goals for for this age group. It talks here about the objectives for the age group and the learning environment they're in, some of the activities that we're going to look to formulate, and then what the coaching should look like on uh within the the training environment as well as on match day. You can see here, we've got the different game formats, but the one that I'm giving the example on, this is that eleven V eleven. Uh you can see here, now it starts to go into a little bit of the weeds of um some of those characteristics. So this is something that I think it was week two, correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, that we sh- uh we shared with our um coaching staffs. And so over the break, they've been going through this in preparation for these uh whether it was last week or this week with uh them starting training. This is the these are the things that they're starting to tailor their training sessions to within the context of our game model and playing principles. So it will go through each one of those um characteristics here. What you'll see is, these are just some of the standards, again, some of the things that you may see on on the park, but these are the parameters in which we work with within the uh eleven V eleven uh format. What some of the field size are looking at, um now it starts to get into some of the soccer-specific pieces. So I told you, this is the phase that they're in. It's called the progression phase one. Um you can see there's an overarching things that they're going to be working on, so scanning, receiving, dribbling, short combination play, and finishing. These are all taken from our game model. Our game model is how we want to play. And then it goes into the next iteration of, it talks about what we want to look like in attacking, defending, transitioning to attacking, and transitioning to defending. And then from there, we have principles. That's how we teach uh within our uh training space. And from there, that's when uh your coach is out there uh selecting age-appropriate activities that layer in our principles that mimic our game model so we can hit these objectives within uh within the certain age bands. As I started to mention in here, this is where it's coming from. So you'll start to hear these principles. Um your your child might be talking about them when they're when they're done with practice, they they'll be, you'll hear them at games, you'll hear our staff talking about these same principles in the training and game environment. Um well, uh again, these are the same common themes throughout uh all of our ages and uh genders, so both on our on our boys' side and and the girls' side. And then it really starts to get into the layers. So this is again really soccer-specific. So these are the things that I've actually tasked our coaches with. So they have the plan. Uh we actually have a staff meeting tomorrow where I'm starting to layer in a little bit more education for them. I have video on what these principles look like, so it can bring a little bit of context on the, ah, okay, that's what that looks like. Um and then this Friday for our U twelve and up, we do uh virtual learning. So they'll have uh three iterations of those where I'm going to go into a little bit more detail with uh those teams that play the uh eleven V eleven game format and up, um plus our rising uh our rising ninety-nines going into eleven V eleven. So this is again, this is what this looks like. It breaks it down into these player actions. So again, this is how our coaches will be teaching. Um and then it continues just to break down into each one of the uh attacking, defending, transition to attack, transition to defend. So what I'll do, Jen, is I will stop sharing my screen again. Um we'll allow our members a minute or two if they have any questions in the chat. Um I can answer and then I can give another example of what it looks like in the next stage.
Awesome, yeah, thanks, Ness. There's already two questions in here. Um I'll start with the easier one first and then we'll go back up. So Sander asked, do the players' coaches have access to any of this and parents?
Uh so our players, uh sorry, our coaches do. Um our players will receive it from the staffs. Our players, you tw- uh sorry, our players playing the eleven V eleven game format up will be receiving.
Guys, if you can mute yourself. Sorry, I don't have access to meet you.
Um yeah, sorry, I so um our players in the eleven V eleven game format and above, they'll be receiving it at an additional level uh from myself going through virtual learning. Um and parents, I'm sharing these uh sharing this with you with you now. I'll be sharing it in more specific details as we go through our monthly town halls. I'll kind of start to dive into certain areas. Um so as an example, next month's town hall will actually be on periodization. So what we'll have is we'll talk about what that actually looks like within the context of a session, within the context of a week, and then within the context of the entire season. So whether it's a fall, a winter, or a spring. I hope that answers the question.
I think so. And then here's one for you. Would you mind? I I guess it's not necessarily backing up necessarily, but would you mind backing up just a little to let us know about what you have identified as the biggest obstacles for Apex? And why there's a need for change? Guys, let's go ahead and make sure we're muting ourselves, sorry.
So the the first one that I would say is um just getting alignment. Um and and they uh my goal was to bring alignment through a framework and making sure that our staffs feel supported so they can go out and perform at their best selves. So my goal is the first and foremost, uh and I think I mentioned this in the week one or week two email on on the uh on the job was parent education. So that's why I have have all you all. I had had been layering in the background a lot of the coaching education to get us to this point so that when we hit the ground running going into the spring, uh we actually had a good framework in place. So my first one is uh parent education. My second one is coaching ed, so that'll be ongoing. A little bit more heavy on the front end in terms of education, and then it will just be continuing ed as we co- uh as we go through. And then the third pillar would be club methodology. So this kind of ties all uh all three together, which is really just getting everyone on the same page. Um I made chicken.
Okay, one more for you. Yeah. Um which is going back to that original question. So are there going to be hand-hard copies that people can have of the um information that you've just provided?
Uh on like in terms of like coaches, our coaches have.
Right, but do the players and parents have? Will you be providing them hard copies to the parents and players? Or is it just you passing on the IDP information and sprinkling that in?
Great question. Uh we will in pieces. Um it's a lot of information. So just even that one document that I just shared, it's over two hundred and thirty pages as it breaks down U five to U eighteen. So what I've been doing with the the coaching staffs is I've been blocking it out for their particular age group. And what I've encouraged them to do is look at your age group, look at the year prior, but also have a have an understanding of what the future looks like. So they're really working within kind of three age group frames. Um but yeah, as it as it pertains to players and coach and parents, the players, this is a lot of information, especially for our our really young guys. Um so that's why I'm doing a lot of the teaching essentially our eleven V eleven game format, guys, and above. Um but uh the parents, yes, I will start to slowly dribble out this information, but it it can be a lot. So that's one of why I at least want to be able to control the message as it comes out to you all, but our staffs, they have access to all of this. Any other questions, Jen?
I think we can uh move on to the next round.
Perfect. Um what I will do is I will share my screen and now I'll show you what that looks like in a annual plan. So.
Julie. Ben.
Please mute as you're coming in. So what I've done for our coaching staffs is I've broken out um all of our age groups into these annual plans. So I'll use the U twelve, U thirteen as a a really brief example. So what we've got here, and I'll start to zoom in and out. Okay, so I just want you to be a little patient with me. Uh this is something that all of our coaching staff have. This is how they're building out their lesson plans for your child's practice. So what they have is it's broken out into all of the weeks. What education term the players are in, uh the phase of the training. So we what we talk about in in terms of phases, you're thinking um the the preseason phase, the fall in-season, uh it might be the fall postseason, the winter, the spring, uh the spring in-season, um and then the the post-spring season. What we've got here is that moment and team function. So the easiest way to understand the moment and team function is that's actually built off of our game model. So when I shared with you, we have the attacking, defending, transition to attacking, transition to defending. What you can see over here, and I'll slowly come across, is this is where our staff are right now. So they're actually working on buildup with a creation focus as well as a transition from attacking to defending. The next layer down is they're actually working on the first two attacking principles and the first two transition from attacking to defending principles. This looks different if we're working with the annual plan with the U fourteen to U eighteen, the U ten to eleven, and the U seven to nine. This is built off of things like where are they developmentally? What can they cognitively understand? What you can see here, the next layer down, so I'm going to zoom out a little bit, we start to talk about the training session type. This one, I'm only going to glance over because this is the one that we'll actually go into next month when we talk about periodization. Um and and what that means is the the work-to-rest ratios when they're in the training space in those activities. What does the overall session look like? What is the overall sessions within the week look like? And then where are we within that particular, we call them a a microcycle. So you talk about anywhere between two to six to eight weeks. So we'll go into more of that when we go into next month on periodization. Uh you can see here, the next one is description of the game situation. So when we're educating coaches as they're coming through our coaching schools, we talk about them identifying the five Ws. So you talk about the who, the where, the what, the when, and the why. That is all a little bit more of the soccer jargon, but all of those are related back to our playing principles that are related back to our overall game model and style of play. You can see some of the other ones here. We just have in a note for, okay, how long are the sessions? The physical preparedness of our players, so that's kind of linked. Uh you would think that's kind of linked to the periodization, so we'll touch on that next month. And then the last one there is the education. So we talk about how we're layering in the teaching aspects of our game model and principles to our players. What do we want to achieve in that overall cycle of either the fall or the spring? So Jen, what I'll do is I'll actually stop sharing my screen. Um and I will allow if anyone has any questions on the annual plan. Um feel I can absolutely answer those, or if there's any other questions.
I know, uh so there's no questions in the chat it right now, but I know it can be like overwhelming. What am I even looking at? Because there's an Excel sheet with a lot of things on it, so it'll continue to get layered in uh as we all process it. Here we go. So is this plan for academy-level players? That's the first question, premier B players? Premier A, or is it going to be dove into deeper?
Uh great question. This is for all of our young people. We do this, this is not a premier or an A, a B, an academy. All of our teams are working off of this framework.
And then the next question, is the total session duration a cumulative amount of time for uh for the week or for an individual training?
Great question. Uh so we can go, we'll go more into that in I I can see kind of your your smiling, Jen, because this is this is right up your alley in terms of periodization, but yeah, great question. So we talk about the the cumulative time, which is whether it's a ninety-minute session or a sixty-minute session. Within those layers, our coaches have certain activities that they're working to layer in the principles. And then within those, you're talking about each activity has its own work-to-rest ratio. So depending upon uh if we were working with, say, uh a U seventeen team, they were in uh in the middle of their season. They were on session two of the week, so it's not a re-entry session that would essentially, here, I can, you know what I'll do? I will just touch on it briefly because this is stuff that I really enjoy talking about. I'll share my screen again. Um but what I didn't show was this part down here. So this is what our staff, um again, this is what our staff.
Can you zoom zoom in just a little bit? Those of us who don't have our glasses on.
Yeah, I got you. So this uh this kind of block here is actually referenced off of the training session type. So um most of our team, most of our younger teams, um uh they've got those two sessions a week. What we look to have is a a preparative slash organizational and then a organizational slash kind of threshold maintenance type session. So what we um what we educate our staff on it is how to achieve some of those um achieve some of those goals within this session that they're building. So within that, they that's then how they build out their activities. So I'll go into it just really briefly. If you were going to have a preparative session and the players were playing a five V five, you can see here the demand is about kind of thirty percent. So what we talk about is those players, um they're playing five V five. They could probably play four uh four two-minute games with, I would say, like a one-minute rest. So it's like a two-to-one work-to-rest ratio. But if you said that they were looking for more of like a threshold type of a day, they could play that same five V five game in a little more condensed space because now we're asking for a few more player actions. And you could play four three-minute games or four-four-minute games and maybe only give them one minute to ninety-second rest. So there's less rest, so we're challenging the players in terms of their physical preparedness um while still teaching the game. So this actually isn't uh doing like running or anything a- away from the training session. You players can actually get fit up while playing the game while still learning the game. Um sorry, that's, I I enjoy talking about this stuff. I love I love that someone asked about it. Um and uh yeah, so we'll talk more about the that in the um periodization uh lecture that we'll go into uh next.
Great question, though. Go ahead and mute yourself.
Uh do you have any other questions just briefly, Jen, or no?
Um not necessarily as it pertains to uh your presentation.
Okay. Um so what I'll do is the last one, I told you all that I would share an example of what one of our zones looks like. Um so that's what I'll do. I'll go ahead and I'll share my screen and we'll go into what zone two looks like.
Vanessa, I think you accidentally muted yourself.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate you. Uh so I'll quickly go back. Um as I mentioned, we've got three zones. This is how our staff have been uh are being educated. Um so I said, this is zone two. So zone two for us is our U thirteen to U sixteen age group. Can be a little funky. I kind of wanted to use this one as a an example because you've got that kind of middle school, high school that we're managing. So what you'll see here is, this is our So what you'll see here is, this is our club DNA. So this is what we're looking to softly introduce through the spring. And a hard release of this as we stuck to go into the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five seasonal year. You can see, uh, the playing DNA. So this is what we want to look like. When we're in our training spaces as well as game spaces, you can see the coaching staff DNA. You can see the type of player that we're looking for in our environment. And then it goes a little bit more into the training activity DNA and the training session DNA. So how we build our sessions. Uh, briefly put in here, uh, again, this will have continued evolution as our pathway, uh, continues to evolve. But this is really the pathway for our players right now. Uh, they can continue on the way up, they can pivot on, on, uh, in different spaces. But this, this is really the pathway that our players are on right now. As I said, I was going to go into a little bit more detail of the phases that we have. Um, we've got this discovery phase, so that's that kind of. Four years old to seven years old. You can see the focus there of what we're, we're working with those guys. But I want to just bring your attention to that progression phase. Yes, it does have three iterations to it. We're really focused for this age group on, uh, sorry, these age groups. And this zone on that progression kind of one and two. Uh, what you'll see here, these are our zone two core objectives for the U thirteens to U sixteens. Uh, you can see, see, we've broken it out into our principles and style, uh, the way we're looking to compete, the mindset, the individual, and then the club concept. Some of the objectives on how we're going to develop the individual within these four key areas, um, and then you can see the how. This is really where this youth thirteen to U sixteen player sits, if you were to put it on a graphic. So how we're still, yes, we're still touching on those fundamentals. And you'll see it in the, in the subsequent slides on really how we've identified. The areas of focus for these, uh, these players in this zone. Um, but they're starting to progress more into these team tactical principles. So now they're starting to grasp the full concept of the game because they're playing. The eleven V eleven game model. Uh, you can see here, what we've done is we've, uh, just given an example for our staffs. And we'll dive into this more when we get to do some in-person on-field training for them. Um, just how we s- uh, structure our sessions. You can see here that goal is we. We want players to be able to dominate in their one V one battles. Uh, within the context of the team, you'll start to see some progression, uh, sorry, possession and pressing activities. And then there'll be activities that's, uh, linked from a transition to attack to transition to attack or transition to defend. That's why you saw in the segment that our teams are in right now. They're working on either the first two or first three attacking principles. But they're also working on the first either one, two, or three. Uh, transition to attacking or transition to defending principles. Um, we don't just want to focus on just one segment of attacking or, or defending. It's what happens once we get it. What do we do? And what happens once we lose it? Uh, you can see here, the, the objective of what we're looking to do. When we start to talk about the full concept of like a team structured activity, uh, sorry, a team structured training session. Uh, we'll have like an intro activity, a small sided activity, and then, uh. A secondary small sided activity that starts to link lines. Um. We've got here, uh, how our staff, um, are really looking to coach within. Our club-wide methodology. Um, I want to be really specific with this. It's not this one way on how to teach. Uh, there's a reason why this game is so great, because you have different ways that you can, um, you can reach your players. So the things we're looking for though, from our staffs is creating a holistic reality base and exper- experiential learning environment. And within that, what that looks like, accountability, competition, and collaboration. Um, and these zones like one, two, and three. Uh, we'll start to get some of this information out on our websites too. So you can actually, you can reference it there. Um, but all of our coaching staff do have this too. So I mentioned when we're in these phases of development, uh, how we built out our curriculum. So it's really intentional with, um, not only these words, but these colors. That's what'll draw your attention in, in the next few slides. So, um, if, uh, a player is in a certain age band. Um, and it's color-coded yellow, that's really, it means introduction. So what that means is. The objective is, uh, is very new for the player and it's presented and trained kind of for that first time. If it's this blue one, it's really a focus for that age band. So you're talking about the players are trained to execute the objective in their game without the interference of the coach. So we're trying to create the environment in the training space. And then on match day, we're seeing if they can actually implement it. And then the third one there, that green one, this is that mastery. So what we talk about here is the player is capable to execute the objective in the game. In different situations without the interference of the coach. And the coach is able to, um, put the attention on specific details of the objective. So it might be, uh. We're, we're working on building out of the back and we're fine tuning the, uh, the holding midfielder, so the number six. They're scanning, repositioning and body, uh, and body shape on how they can show in helping us build up. So as I said here, this is where you can really start to see what it looks like. So you've got that introduction in there, you've got that, that mastery. And you've got in there where if it's a focus for us. So you've got that yellow, you've got that blue or that green. So this just brings a, a little bit more attention to, oh, this player, this is where they are in, in this. And, uh, and again, this is all related back to that learning plan that I showed you early on. That was, um, that was all centered around where they are cognitively, emotionally, um, in, uh. Uh, in their growth and development. So you've broken it down here in the technical aspects of attacking and defending. And now we start to talk a little bit more about those principles of play. So remember when I was referencing whether it was attacking or, or defending, then we've got the transition to de- attacking, transition to defending. Same here, you've got the introduction, you've got the focus, and then you've got the mastery. And those gray boxes where it's not color-coded, that is not a focus for us right now. We'll get there. Okay, so last few slides here. Um, for this specific age group, they, this is what their IDP will look like. Their IDP, what we'll have is a cycle we're looking to do in August. So we understand that in this age bracket, we've got our high school players. So they would have a caveat on when they would, uh, when they would complete it. Then there would be reevaluation by the player with collaboration with a coach. And then there would be another reevaluation by the player and the coach. As they're starting to, to cycle out of the spring season. This specific IDP, this is for those you, those players that will have in the, um. Those virtual learnings, uh, those three virtual learning series, I'm going to teach them how they actually fill this out. So I think this is, Jen, remind me, I think that one's like the virtual learning number two, maybe, or number three. Um, yeah, we have a different one for our younger players. Um, and then our coaches have been shared that. We will also share that with, um, our families too. Um, some other things to look for. Uh, what we're encouraging our players, uh, U eleven to U eighteen is having their own, um, having their own journal. We really want to encourage our players to have reflection on the training and the games that they're going through. The only way that we're going to continue to, uh, increase their game understanding and decision-making. In the back of our mind, we're thinking their initiative and their drive to want to be a better player is going to be through this. They'll be taking notes on, maybe there, i- it was something that pertained to their position specifically. Maybe it was something that pertained to, uh, one or two of the playing principles. But we're really going to encourage that our players show up with a notebook and pen. Right after practice, take a few notes down and then have reflection in preparation for the next practice or next game. We've done, we've started to evolve what our Apex program looks like. We're going to be really intentional in the messaging in that space too. We are continuing to lay in our playing principles and our game model in that space. I led to it a little, a little early when I spoke about the IDP. So those players in this age band, they're going through these virtual meetings. Again, you can see it there. We'll be talking about club-wide style of play, playing principles, player profiles. So what it looks like, what, uh, our principles will look like specific to someone that plays the number seven. The number seven plays as an outside right midfielder. What does that look like? In all phases of the game, attacking, defending, transition to attacking, transition to defending. And we've got video for them too. So they can actually see what that player sh- what that player can look like, operating with, uh, within those principles and that game model. As we go through here, uh, some other things that will, uh, will start to come down for this age group. And the first one there, actually, that's actually going to be for all of our age groups. We're evolving what our goalkeeping academy is going to look like. And then the second one there is, uh, not only developing. Uh, not only developing, but, um, we, we want to resource to not only educate. But we want to empower and enhance the opportunities for our players to assist them in gaining exposure to colleges and planning for the future. So whether players want to go on or not, um, we do want to have that in place. Whether they want to go continue play or not, we still want to be able to provide that space for them. Um, and that will take them on a journey of things to do, uh, in their own spaces, both academically and athletically. Um, some other resources that are, uh, that are coming down. So we'll be working with, uh, soccer parenting. Um, for some of you, I, I've shared. Uh, the journey that, uh, Sky Eddie Bruce, the founder of soccer parenting, that she's been on, um. And how this came about. Uh, I've known Sky for, gosh, nearly ten years now. Um, Sky is a coach, Sky is a parent, and, um, what she really wanted to be able to do is just. Make youth soccer, honestly, make youth soccer better. And you can see here that. I wrote it there with an emphasis on community curriculum and collaboration. So soccer parenting carries out that mission by addressing sideline behavior, engaging, supporting, and encouraging. Youth soccer coaches and parents. It's honestly the reason why I wanted to have these, uh, these monthly town halls with you all. Engaging with you all, educating you all, so you can come on this journey with us. The other one, we're looking to develop this relationship with Athletic Republic. Uh, what they do in that space is they work with families, uh. You'll be able to utilize them to, uh, work with individualized, highly effective, scientifically-backed, sport-specific training. To complement the player's growth and development. They will have our learning plans. They'll also have our annual plan. So they'll be able to see where the players are in the specific, uh, cycle. Uh, what they're working on, uh, whether it's the attacking or transition to attacking, defending, transition to defending. And, uh, they'll be able to work with you collaboratively in, and, uh, in evolving the product of the players. Um, they can speak more to, uh, kind of what they do on our next call, uh, sorry, uh, our next meeting. When it's a little bit more tailored to, um, uh, periodization. Some other things, uh, you'll start to see. So again, we'll, we'll get this information out on websites. And especially as we lead into our, um, tryouts. Just some of the programs, what they, what the, what those age groups look like, the leagues that they would be in. The approximate events, the trainings, additional sessions that we have, the months that they're working off of. What the coaching framework would look like, and if they do want to play an indoor. It would be at an additional fee and we wouldn't recommend any more than one. Uh, and then you can see there's some of the additional programming that we have. So that U thirteen to U fifteen is a bit of an overlap, especially when those players are, um, are playing in high school. Now, what we've got here is we have events and tournaments that we'll be able to share with our families. Uh, our coaching staffs have this too. So this is kind of what we work from. And, uh, we'll provide a, a kind of guidance and advice to our staffs on where their team currently is. And how they can prepare for events. Um, what you've got here is, if you're in this zone, what the weekly cycle looks like. So we would get to, they would be training three days a week. What does that look like? What is the first session look like? The second session look like? And the third session look like? So you see it talked a little bit about the reentry, just coming off of a weekend. High load with a game. So how we can still layer in our principles, but it is at a lower load. You can see the, the day two there, you're talking a little bit more about like attacking and transition to attacking. And day three there, you're talking a little bit more of the sessions around defending, transition to defending. Told you all that we're, we talk about that big macro cycle, so that full year, what does it look like? Well, this is what it looks like. We talk about what a preseason would look like when that occurs. The full one, full two, winter, spring one, and spring two. That's really for our staffs and how they start to build out the, uh, sorry, how they're starting to match the, um. The game model and the, the playing principles that we're trying to teach. You can see here, I just gave an example of what it would look like, uh, for our high school players. And then I spoke a little bit more about, um, where we're starting to continue to have some more evolution as we go into the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five cycle. Um, for our Apex program and for those age groups that are U thirteen and above. Um, and how we're going to evolve what that looks like. So what I'll do is I will stop sharing my screen right now. Um, Jen, if you're still there, um, I can wait a minute or two if you've got any more questions.
Yeah, a few questions as it pertains to some of the stuff that you just, uh, presented. So we'll go back a little bit to the principles. Um, how long does it take? How long does the implementation of these principles take? Will every pencil be covered in the course of a full year and then in? And then in follow-on years be touched on again, but at a higher level?
Yes, to the last. Yeah, yeah, yes, to the last part. So it's, it's methodically broken out. So safer attacking. I believe that there's like six principles of attacking and. There's principles and then we have these things called sub-principles. So in the first principle, there's like two to three iterations in there. So what we work on is, um. Our teams, even up to the age of U eighteen, they won't hit on all seven of the attacking principles. We may get to the fourth or fifth. Um, but say you're working with a U ten team, no, they are not getting through our whole game model and principles. In, uh, in one year. Um, this is back to that, uh, one of those original slides that I said. There's a reason why it's called long-term player development. It's that seven to ten years. Um, we can't squeeze it in seven to ten months. Really good question though.
Yes, and then, okay, so then back to the IDPs, the IDPs based off of. Um, respective age groups. When can parents or players? Well, players, when can players expect to see, um, the IDPs for their respective age groups?
Uh, so the one example I gave of just like the zone two. So it had, um, in like the, the August and then December and then the April. So the zone two players, they're the ones going specific, zone two and zone three are going specifically through an IDP. We have another one, and if you pause with me really quick, I can briefly find what it, what I can show you what the zone one guys go through. So Jen, if you're okay, I'm just going to quickly share my screen.
Yep.
So. This is what it looks like in its complete form. So we have one for like our, our little guys, like our seven and nine-year-olds. Um, what we've got here is this is more, um, and it's built into like that zone one guide. This is, they'll receive one in the fall and then in the spring. And this is one that the coach will do. So what the coach will do is they'll engage like a color for the specific. Um, uh, the specific area of whether it's attacking, defending, if it's in the technical skills, the physical, the mental. And then what we've got here, like where they kind of sit in the group standing. And then the action plan, what our coaches will do in the fall is they'll give just one area of focus that the kiddos can, can be working on. And then the kid and the family has that. So when we go into the spring, we can have a little bit of reflection and we'd like to have like a, a one B to that. So where have we? So where have we been and where can we continue to go? Um, and then what we've got is we're going to show out our nine to twelve-year-olds. This is like a really pre, like. They're getting into the IDP. We're going to kind of show them how to fill one out. So they're going to kind of work with the coach on, okay, how could I develop? One of the, the little principles that I want to work on. Uh, maybe it's a certain player action of like. Or it might be scanning or just. Um, so we'll show our little guys that uh, in preparation for. This is kind of what it would look like. So again, the blue is the stuff we're not really focused on because that's not an area of focus. Um, remember these colors? They're like, they'll be related back to where they are in that space. And then this is the, the you twelve to you eighteen. Hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you for showing an example as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll bounce around a little bit so I can keep these kind of like close to the same little topic here. Um, what is, uh, what are your thoughts on players playing up in an age group?
Situational. And a lot of it is going to be related back to the player actions, uh, where they are in their uh, in their developmental process. But we've never had a framework in place. So we haven't been able to compare where they are right now. To where the older age group might be, so we can calibrate. But good question.
And then here's one, eh, in the club's opinion, what age should kids be stuck to one position?
Uh, never. Uh, I mean, I just left the college space. I, I mean, I, I think I've shared with some of you. I also work with our. You fifteen women's national team and we're encouraging those guys to be out of uh, to be able to play in at least two positions.
Great response. Um, are Apex on Sunday going to be more geared for old, for kids older than you eleven?
Okay, great question. Uh, in that zone two where I gave the example at the end. We're working on building that club concept. So it's that, it'll be that youth thirteen player and above. And we're actually. We're actually looking to within the Sunday Apex, grab a principal. With a specific functional group. And then break them out into if it was those that play, tend to play in like a, in the back line. So our twos, threes, fours, and fives. Our six, eight, and ten, and then our nine, seven, and eleven, they would go off into three different spaces. And work on a specific, um, a specific principle and a player action in that um, in that area. Great question though.
Really good and thoughtful question. So I will answer the questions about goalkeeping because that is a. My role and I just want to give a shout out to Brian because he has been holding down the fort with a handful of other people. I'm certain uh, on the goalkeeping side and I know we need extra support and help here. Um, as far as plans for goalkeeping, yes, we have plans for goalkeeping. We have curriculum coming out for our goalkeepers. We take our goalkeeping, I, we take our goalkeeping very seriously. Uh, and I'm in the process of also bringing onboard uh, previous goalkeepers that I have coached in this area. Uh, and help develop so that we can help continue the pathway for our goalkeeping development. Um, and then I saw, I think, a question about moving goalkeeping inside. I did, we've discussed internally about having uh, goalkeeping at some point. May like if there's space, I can't guarantee there's space right now on Apex Sundays to do some goalkeeping. Uh, and everybody's vying for turf space inside. We will work on continuing to have training outside. Um. It's been a while, but about nine, ten years ago, we uh, Nevada, Northern Nevada hosted. A goalkeeper coach from the women's national team uh, in North Carolina, Tracy Noonan. And we had to shovel the snow off of Golden Eagle and it was still a brilliant camp. We still got it done. We will obviously keep the players' health in mind at all moments and all time, but. We uh, even having gone and been on the northeast side for a little bit, uh, will allow our bodies to adapt to the climate change for sure. Uh, but we'll definitely get rocking and rolling on our goalkeeping development. We're also planning on having two different uh, goalkeeping. Sessions for the older age groups and for the younger age groups. And I want to use the. Age group as I'm air quoting it because we'll really be trying to break them, break them down based off of ability. Uh, and where they are so we can push them properly. But yes, there's more goalkeeping coming. Goalkeeping camps. I uh, can't get enough goalkeeping, but thank you for asking. Do we have any other questions? Let's see, will Sunday Apex have different time sessions for littles versus bigger players?
Um, that might be something that, that we can take away and and talk about and maybe get a little bit more information on. Um, but what we've got right now is our players are in their uh, specific birth year. And then uh, within that, they've got a staff and everyone. Other than like our little, little babies, they're going through um, a different uh, sorry, they're going through a, a different learning plan of. Uh, a game model of play, practice, play where our elders, so you're thinking, I think it's that. Twenty fifteen, Jen, twenty fifteen and above, they're all working off of the same lesson plan. I actually designed all those. Um, so it's a way for me act, to actually impact our coaching staff on how to build out a lesson plan. Um, using our principles and what activities they can use. Um, I do, Jen, want to be cognizant of everyone's time as well. So I know we're hitting the top of the hour. Um, if uh, if we have any more questions, please feel free to email me. Um, my email is Vanessa at RenoApex.com. Um, it's been a busy five weeks, but also an exciting five weeks. Um, I've loved being here. Love working with our staffs, uh, love working with our directors in getting this information out. Um, and really now we're just excited to see what it looks like out on the field. Um, so. Yeah, I love teaching, I love educating, and you all as families, uh, you're, you're my number one priority. That's why we have parent education right at the top. So Jen, if you're okay, um, we will close up and thank you all. I really appreciate you all. Thank you.